Session of six thirty to discuss personnel evaluation. Welcome, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Hauser? Mrs. Holder?
Here.
Mrs. Maynes?
Here.
Mr. Muto?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mrs. Sera?
Here.
Dr. Vort? And Mr. McCann?
Here.
Go over to Dr. Beck, Mr. Tepper. Superintendent, report.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. This past weekend, we lost a longtime educator, coach, administrator, board member, and most of all, a friend of Great Lake Trail. Stephen LaCassio spent forty-one years with the Greater Lake Trail School District, serving our district as a math teacher, an athletic director, a coach, assistant principal and principal. I had the privilege of working with Steve during my tenure as an assistant principal and principal of the senior high school, and most recently, as a member of our Board of Education. Steve dedicated his life to serving our school community. He always made decisions on what was best for our students. He will definitely be missed, and we are grateful for his service to the Greater Lake Trail School District. Please keep Steve's wife, Sherry, and their family in your thoughts and prayers. Could we please have a moment of silence for Mr. Steve LaCassio?
You brave eyes, please.
Thank you. Just a quick update. Currently, Westmoreland County has been in the moderate level for community transmission for COVID for the past two weeks. Therefore, in accordance with the Pennsylvania Department of Education guidelines, once a county is in the moderate level of community transmission for two weeks in a row, positive case thresholds and fourteen-day cycles no longer apply for mandatory school closures. So you will see if you have been on our website that our COVID dashboard has returned to what we had in the past, and we are no longer on the fourteen-day rolling cycle and bound to the numbers for positive cases closing our schools. That's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mr. McCann.
Listen for a report. We're going to have a little report. Education, running, Mr. May.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving in to the senior report with Emma and Lauren.
Hello, everyone. Starting at Bagley Elementary School, their sixth-grade camp is May eleventh through the twelfth. Their sixth grade for world parties is May twentieth, and BES Fun Days is June first for grades three through six and June second for K through the second. At LES, their sixth-grade camp is May seventeenth and eighteenth. Their school activity day is June second, and their grade six end-of-the-year celebration is June fourth. For Mountain View Elementary School, their sixth-grade camp is May thirteenth and fourteenth. Their field days is June first and second, and their grade six end-of-the-year celebration is June third. Moving on to the junior high school, their seventh-grade camp was divided between their language arts classes, and the dates are May nineteenth through the twenty-sixth, and their field day is May twenty-eighth. So moving on to the high school, students are getting excited as prom approaches, which is May twenty-first. The last day for seniors for classes is May twenty-seven. Seniors get their hats and gowns on May twenty-eighth, and the senior picnic and the visit-and-look where their old schools is also May twenty-eighth. The graduation ceremony is June third at seven PM at Memorial Stadium. There's also an after-school reception for the senior art showcase, which is set up, which would be Thursday, May thirteenth, from three-thirty to five. And now we'd like to introduce the new school board representatives. So Paige Compliment. Paige will be a senior next year. She is a member of student council and future Business Leaders of America. She's the vice president of the class of 2022 and participates in both golf and diving. And then we have Isaac Crong, who is also a senior next year. Isaac is vice president of the choir and chess club. He has tried to remove Alpha Theta, and Isaac also participates on the tennis team and is a member of the drum club.
Well done. And, um, about you, once again, we come to the end of the year, where we say goodbye to our senior representatives from this year, Emma and Lauren. So we have a token of our appreciation for you girls. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Why don't you tell everybody where you run the store and what your future plans are?
Um, I will be called Baja at St. Francis University, and I'm enrolled in their five-year physician-assisted program. Um, I will be attending the University of Notre Dame, where I will major in either pre-professional studies or neuroscience and behavior on a pre-medical track. Congratulations. Yeah, of course. Thank you so much.
Emma and Lauren, sort us well this year, and we certainly wish you all luck and best wishes for a good college and career.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Enrollment report, Mr. Ferentz.
So obviously, it has your report. I'll just give you an update. Our kindergarten numbers have come up a bit. We are trending right where we were last year. At this time, Bagley currently has fifty-seven enrolled. LES is at seventy-two, and Mountain View is at fifty-five. I would imagine this is going to come right in where we were last year with our kindergarten enrollment. And just an update from last month, when it comes to brick-and-mortar students versus GLSD online students, that seems to have stabilized as well. There hasn't been much change, you know, ten students either way, going from online to brick-and-mortar.
Thank you, Mr. Ferentz. A lot of agenda items for next week. On your agenda for next week will be a resolution to approve the course for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, a social history in other states. Moving along, there will also be an agenda item to approve Mont Aloysius College Dill Enrollment Cooperative Agreement for the twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Also, there will be an agenda item to approve Westmoreland Case Management and Support Incorporated WZI Student Assistance Program and Hand Services Letter Agreement for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, which will also be an agenda item. To approve the Adafi Education Incorporated Updated Tuition Schedule, Exhibit AA for March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, through January of twenty-twenty-one will be an agenda. These all have an attachment with more information for you to read. Also, an agenda item would be to approve the ECAT Academy Memorandum of Understanding Between GLSD and GLEA for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Also, an agenda item would be to approve tuition students for the twenty-one school year, one from Gary, one from Greenberg, and one from Laker Valley, which are big. Also, we will be approving a summer of education grants next week, and that is all my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. All right, now, this is Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, Mr. Lawson will have a presentation, please. Yes, is there for the current?
Yes.
I'm extremely impressed that you guys are saying this. They may not be here. They might not be here today.
We really need to rethink a lot. This will be all.
When you're done, Dan, when you're done, Derek will explain it.
Derek will explain.
Yeah.
Hey, I just looked over to make sure Officer Bear was still there, because he's been asking about this for a couple of months.
He's on the edge of his seat.
He is on the edge of his seat.
He is on the edge of his seat.
So as you guys are aware, every year in May, I present the proposed final budget. By law, we're required to have one adopted by May thirty-first. I just want to reiterate, this is just the proposed file. I'll be standing back up here in June, letting you know if there have been any changes. We have to have the final budget adopted at the end of June thirty, okay? So once the board votes on this at the May twenty-fifth meeting, we will advertise it publicly for twenty days. We'll take public comment on it. It's in my format, but it's also been provided in the state format, which is a twenty-six-page, nothing but numbers. So you're welcome to look at that as well. So the first item we'll look at is final.
How much are we paying you?
I must have, uh... Oh, there it is. Hold tight. Sneak, keep going that direction, just in case it falls out of it, okay? So let's take the first look at our proposed final revenue budget. Local revenues projected go up by a little over thirty-four point eight million dollars, okay? This would be a three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar or one-point-oh-nine percent increase. This is good news. It's based on trend, and the reason I state that is, everybody's familiar with COVID and the impact that it has had. We, you know, projected about four percent loss in local revenue during the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year, and I trended every single month to see if I'm hitting that number, and I'm pleased to tell you that I'm not. While we are not receiving the same level of real estate, our local real estate tax collections, we're receiving much more than we had anticipated, so I felt comfortable building monies back into that local revenue budget lineup. So for example, while COVID has impacted our local revenue, specifically our earned income tax collection and investments, it's believed that these, that it is believed that the amount of lost revenue will be less than anticipated. Just to give you an example, earned income tax collections, we were trending around three-point-nine million per year. The state recommended that we reduce that budget lineup to two-point-nine million for the twenty-twenty-one school year, based on their projections. We only reduced it to three-point-one. We're currently trending at three-point-six, okay? So we haven't faded the full way back, but I believe over the next several years, we will get back to three-point-nine million in earned income tax collections. That is very good news. State revenue projections, a little over twenty-one point five million is what we're budgeting. It's a hundred, around a hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar increase or point-six-five percent. It is assumed to be level funded, except for the state mandated funding areas such as debt service, social security, and PESR's retirement. And why I say that is Governor Rendell came up with it, I'm sorry, Governor Wolf came up with his proposed state budget in the month of February, and he had some significant increases in basic ed subsidy, special ed subsidies, and transportation. And there's no belief that we will receive those additional funds. They don't believe it's available, and they're not certain he'll receive the support specifically with the ESRS funding that we anticipate receiving. Federal revenue projections, total of one-point-one million. We're looking at about a hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars or eleven-point-nine percent increase. Much of this is the use of ESRS funding that you've read so much about, I'm sure in the papers. We're going to assume using the use of over three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and put it towards one-time, non-recurring, local revenue losses. So you're going to hear me state later in the presentation that, you know, ESRS funding that we anticipate receiving should be put towards loss of local revenue that we believe we will recover from, which I believe earned income tax is an example of that, or to purchase, you know, technology capital items, student remediation, things such as that. So our total revenue projections, fifty-seven million, four-hundred-and-seven-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. That's a three-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand or a point-five-six percent increase. So that's the revenue side. Let's look at the expenditure. Building and department budgets. And again, when I speak of building and department budgets, we're not talking about staffing, and we're not talking about benefits. There's no salary and wages. These are supplies, textbooks, equipment, tuition, special education costs, those sorts of things, okay? The total overall budget is sixteen-point-eight million dollars. That's a two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand or one-point-six-one percent decrease. There's going to be a bit of a theme here that I want to make sure I hit home on. In twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, we reduced these budget lineups by eight-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars or four-point-five percent. I view these as controllable costs, okay? We're going to look at salary and benefits in a little bit. Salary and benefits are less controllable, because, you know, we're in the service or in the business of providing services to students, which means we're offering programs, so much of our expenditures deal with salary and benefits and the wages for those employees providing those services. You know, unless you do certain things contractually in nature, or unless you are eliminating or, you know, redoing programs, it's sometimes difficult to control those costs. So what we've been attempting to do over the last two years is to really make cuts in those areas that we believe are controllable in nature. So as I mentioned, salary and benefits, a little over twenty-seven-point-five million dollars. It's a six-hundred-and-six-thousand-dollar increase or two-point-two-five percent. PESR's retirement, PESR stands for the Public School Employees Retirement System, and that is a state law, state mandated, it's no local control. That budget lineup is eight-point-seven million dollars. It's something that we happen to be obligated to allocate funds for and to make payments into. That is an increase of three-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars or three-point-five-nine percent. Insurances, which include medical, dental, vision, life, OPEV insurance, which stands for other post-employment benefits. That budget lineup is about four-point-six million. That's a thirty-four-thousand dollars or a point-seven-five percent increase. So total expenditures are looking to go up almost fifty-seven-point-eight million dollars. I'm sorry, not go up, but that's the total expenditure budget lineup is projected to be fifty-seven-point-eight million roughly. So we're looking at an increase of six-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, which is one-point-one-seven percent. Okay, so real quick, let's look at what we cut. Building and department budgets, we decreased over two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. We felt comfortable doing that because, for example, technology, we decreased by two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand. It is our intention, is roughly two-hundred-thousand in ESRS funding to purchase instructional technology equipment. So while we're cutting that lineup, it's not that we're not going to replace it, we're going to use the federal dollars that we anticipate receiving and put towards technology purchases and technology improvement. New curriculum, staff development, reduction of about thirty-nine thousand, we're going to use, and again, this is on top of what we cut last year. So we anticipate using roughly a hundred-and-forty-five thousand in ESRS funding to purchase new curriculum as well as cover staff development costs. So now I want to get into, so those are what I consider more of the controllable costs. Several of the next areas are less controllable in nature. They make up eighty-six percent of our budget, okay? Eighty-six percent of our budget. Seventy percent is for salary benefits, yes, sir.
I'm going to interrupt you for one second. But I think what I want to say to this is, is that we don't control seventy percent of the cost. We only control a remainder of the other portion which we get.
Yes.
This is not controlled by anything the board does, other than the contract.
Yep, so the next several slides will actually come up to eighty-six percent, and I would say that those, there is very minimal control over any of these areas. The fourteen, the balance, the fourteen percent is what I just talked about, those department budgets, yep. So salary is projected to increase by five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand or two-point-three-two percent. Let's look at a little bit of history now. Things that we've done to control this cost somewhat. Prior to twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, the average salary wage increase for contracted employees was three percent. Since twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, the average annual wage increase for contracted employees has been one-point-two-five percent. You may ask, well, how does that happen? Well, we've had several retirements, resignations, through attrition, we've been able to sort of redesign our staffing, you know, and reallocate the resources that we have. It's allowed us to reduce some of the number of our faculty, okay, which has helped us to control these costs. Benefits, they're projected to increase by three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand or two-point-four-four percent. Medical is projected to increase by four percent, okay? For any of you who follow healthcare, that's very, very low. One thing that we've done to control costs is we participate in a self-funded healthcare consortium throughout the calendar, okay? While the market trend for annual increases is around ten percent, the consortium's ten-year trend average is two-point-six percent, and the more recent five-year trend is only about one-point-two percent, okay? So we've joined a self-funded organization, we've set money aside for rate stabilization, you know, we're responsible for claims, but we also can do things within the structure of those programs to help to control costs. That could be carving out prescription costs. That could be negotiating better administrative fees. That could be, you know, negotiating rebate paybacks from Heimark, or whoever we're dealing with at that point in time. So while, again, these are fixed costs and hard to manipulate, there are things we're trying to do that are outside of the box to help to control some of these costs. PESR's retirement, that's one that we have nothing to do with. We can't, we can't do anything other than maybe control salary and benefits through, you know, the elimination of some staff. PESR's is a state law, there's no local control, projected increase by three-point-five-nine percent. The employer contribution rate, and I always say, years and years ago, when I got into this business, it was about one percent, okay? It's up to thirty-four-point-nine-two percent. So for every dollar we pay somebody, we're paying an additional thirty-five cents to the retirement system, okay? Now, we get fifty percent of that reimbursed, but it's still a significant, significant, it's almost fourteen percent of our overall budget. So it's a very huge, it's a, it's a large obligation and a huge part of our budget, state law and no local control. Debt service, it makes up seven percent of our costs. So when we go, we have over a hundred-and-eighty, the projected budget is three-point-nine million dollars. The debt service payment is scheduled ready through the two thousand eight, two thousand nine, so it's basically level funded. We're on the hook for paying three-point-nine million dollars through there. Debt service covers the cost of the new Lake Trail Elementary School construction project. Okay, so just to remind everyone, we have over a hundred-and-eighty million dollars in capital assets district-wide. That's the building where we're in here, that's the junior high, all three of the elementary buildings, the stadium. Where the money comes from is we borrow, we issue bonds, okay? But we have to pay those bonds back. So our debt service amount is the total amount of money that we allocate in the taxpayer of dollars paid out our debt. We're in a great situation. We can have, we can have per-school code over a hundred-and-fifteen million dollars in debt service, okay? We only have, what's up, we have thirty-nine, it's about, it's about thirty-one million dollars left. That's it. And then we're going to be debt-free. Now, I want you to know, we will not be debt-free. We have project after project after project that's coming up, but we've, we've done, when I say we, I mean, the school board's been very proactive in forcing us to have a plan in place, so that one thing starts to come off the books, we start hitting the next project. Mr. Thomas did a great presentation and a great analysis of all of our facilities, so we now have that under our belt, and that's going to be much of our driving, the driving force moving forward, so that as, as we pay off new Lake Trail Elementary, how do we reallocate those funds, whether it's the senior edge or the junior edge, to another elementary building? Transportation, transportation makes up six percent of our costs. People say eliminate transportation. When you eliminate transportation for one, you have to eliminate it for all. You provide for one, you have to provide it for all. People have talked to us about, well, listen, I see buses driving around, they're empty. Well, if we can get their parents to sign off, we have to have a seat on the bus for every student, and if their parents willing to sign off on our waivers, saying that they don't need that seat, then we don't need to have it for them, right? Problem is, parents won't sign that, because they never know when they're going to need that seat on the bus. So transportation is a significant cost for the district, which is why we went through and did an RFP for transportation service providers, right? We just didn't hand the contract back and renew and renew and renew. Last two times, we've done RFP for services because it's such a costly service, and we need to do our best to make sure, make sure that we're maintaining a quality service at a reasonable price. This budget includes the cost of transport regular education students, non-public students, special education students, and all extracurricular activities. The projected budget's about three-point-two million. The anticipated increase is eighty-five thousand or two-point-seven-five percent. The current five-year contract began July one of twenty-twenty. Year one of the new contract called for a five-point-nine percent decrease, which we recognized during the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Years two through five call for an average increase of around two-point-seven-five percent. Plan operations makes up three percent of our costs. Projected budget's about one-point-five million, anticipated increase of around a little over twenty-two thousand dollars or one-point-four-eight percent. As I mentioned before, we have over a hundred-and-eighty million dollars in capital assets district-wide. This budget covers utility costs for all the buildings. This budget covers repair costs to maintain all of our buildings. So those areas that I just highlighted are much, much less controllable than any of the other areas that I spoke about originally, and then they make up eighty-six percent of our costs. So let's quickly go back and do an expenditure historical review, okay? Salary and benefit expenditure budget increases over the last five years averaged two-point-six-nine percent or nine-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars. But the total expenditure budget increase, all, everything, not just salary and benefits, the five-year average is one-point-five-seven percent or a hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars. What I'm trying to show here is that the board, the administration, the school district in general, has done a lot to control those more controllable areas, okay? Those areas that we do not view as fixed, because obviously, if we weren't doing that, the total overall budget would equal the salary and benefit portion, if not more. The twenty-twenty-one salary budget, expenditure budget for COVID impact, it increased two-point-three-five percent or eight-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars, okay? We knew that was going to occur because of the teacher jump step, as well as the PESR's increases, but the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one total expenditure budget after COVID impact, it was frozen at zero. There's a zero-dollar change. So just need to be aware, we cut a lot of other areas. So that other fourteen percent, we made a lot of cuts during the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. So any potential increases, they were offset by cutting the building support budgets and the debt service dropped as well. So how about the revenue historical review? Local and state budget increase, the five-year average goes up about point-seven-six percent or three-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. The total revenue budget increase, so local, state, federal, and other, it's going up about point-eight-seven percent or four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. The twenty-twenty-one local, state budget COVID impact, it decreased by two-point-five percent or one-point-three million dollars. The, it would have been a larger decrease, but it was offset by the increase in state required funding that I mentioned previously, which would be social security, retirement, and the rent subsidy reimbursement. The total revenue budget decreased by two-point-two percent or one-million-one-seventy-eight. And we were able to do this because we had, we utilized our fund balance and we utilized some ESRS funding. As we talked before, Moody's had an adjustment made to us. Our unassigned fund balance was not necessarily meeting their threshold. Our rating, while it's still extremely attractive, we need to consider using less of our unassigned fund balance moving forward, so that might not be a tool that we can pull out of our tool belt moving forward. So we need to be cognizant of that. Okay, expenditure and revenue trends. So the five-year So the five-year actual expenditure and revenue trends, on average, total expenditures increased by $856,000 per year. Assuming no millage increase, uh, the average total revenue increases by $445,000 per year. This creates an average shortfall of roughly $411,000 or 1.2 mils. I went back and looked 10 years just to see if anything changed between the five and the 10 years. On average, the total expenditure increased by $944,000, roughly the same as the five-year average. Assuming no millage increase, on average, total revenues increased by $548,000. This created, it would have created an annual shortfall of roughly $395,000 per year or 1.15 mils, okay? This depicts it in a chart here. So the orange line is the direction that our expenditures are trending. The black line is the direction that our revenues are trending. If we've had no millage increase over the last 10 years, that is the gap that you would be looking at, okay? So in summary, what I'm trying to communicate, ESER's funding is one-time, non-recurring revenue that should not be used to balance a budget unless we are able to confirm that it's replacing short-term local revenue loss that we are certain will be recovering in the next three years. Or if it was offsetting one-time or being used for one-time, non-recurring expenditure purchases. So an example of short-term local revenue losses are income tax collections. And examples of one-time, non-recurring expenditures would be the purchases for student remediation, capital, technology purchases. So while we may see an influx of ESER's funding, we still have to recognize, we're still going to see a gradual growth in other operating costs that we're going to need to make sure that we give consideration for when tech, when setting any future millage amounts. So my recommendation would be to approve a proposed final budget in the amount of $57,752,938. Uh, this recommendation reflects a shortfall of $345,000 or 1 mil. Um, and remember, you know, 1 mil impact on the average home of, or is $27 per year, okay? So keep that in mind. Next steps, continue to evaluate operating expenditures and continue to review potential revenue funding sources. Um, I just wanted to end up here. So while recommending at this point in time the 1 mil increase, I'm also recommending that we, uh, uh, offer once again the taxpayer assistance program. Uh, if you remember, it's the, it has the same eligibility requirements as the program that is offered by the Department of Revenue, except for department, uh, it's only for property owners only. Renters would not be eligible. Um, the household income limit is about $35,000. Uh, you must be age 65 or older, a widow, a widower, age 50 or older, age 18 or more, and be permanently disabled to be eligible. The rebate would be 5% to the state amount with a max of $32.50 and would not exceed 100% of the property real estate tax. Excuse me, so that's my presentation. Can I answer any questions? You know, when we talk about the millage rate, the only other thing that I would want to comment on is that, you know, there was an article in the paper on April 18 by, April 18 by Governor Wolf. And he talked about the state funding obligation, and it stated the greater Latrobe was one of the districts that was significantly underfunded by the state government. And it also went on to talk about that we have the third lowest cost per pupil, uh, cost in Westmoreland County. And we have the third lowest millage rate in Westmoreland County. So I know that you might not want to consider a 1 mil increase, but with everything else that I've highlighted, I think that if you do not consider a 1 mil increase, it's only going to compound itself year after year after year. It will be in a much worse situation, uh, you know, two or three years from now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Okay, also on May 25th meeting, we asked the board to approve, and all these are, have attachments, which we'll repeat, but to say over time here, is the Treasurers Report, Paying the Bills, uh, acceptance of gifts, grants, and donations. Uh, as a matter of fact, I'd just like to mention one thing is Michelle Acquainfield and Sarah Christman Thomas, uh, both of the State Farm Insurance Agency, donated $1,000 for the, uh, each for the bus, for the prom bus cost. Just total $2,000 for two people. And I'd like to thank them very much for that, that helps create a deal, uh, for all group.
And if I can add, Mr. Palmer, I'm sorry. The buses that, um, we have for our students attending the prom are the buses through Anderson Company, but they have a clean, clear air filtration system. And there is, uh, an increase in cost, but, um, we're very fortunate that we had some sponsors step forward.
Good stuff, most good stuff. Uh, and appoint Act 51 Tax Partners for the 21, 22 school year. 21, 22 designation of the Flosworth. Authorization to vest funds for 21, 22 year. Reappoint school district treasurer through June 30, 2022. Approve 2022 real estate tax assessment appeals program. Approve 2021, 2022 district tax rebate program. Approve the 2021, 2022 general fund proposal, proposed final operating budget. Uh, just make a comment there just because of lunatic. And just so everybody understands, it's not a $57 million enterprise, it's a $114 million year enterprise. And it's a business, we're going to just teach your kids. And the Finance Committee meetings, uh, April 13, 2021 are attached. The next Finance Committee meeting will be Tuesday, June 8, 5:30 here at the Senior High School Library. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. The service and operational funding, but it's all.
Kind of feel like Sue Manes these days. Chloe. Uh, I'm just trying to, uh, I'll do it for these. Uh, the attachments are all. Approve the summer projects, permission to seek close, and lower bids for the 2021 capital improvement projects is listed in the attachment. Projects will be funded by the Capital Improvement Fund. Mr. Thomas, just a quick question. At our last facilities meeting this week, did you have any luck finding any kids work with summer at the school?
Since our meeting, I've had two applicants, uh, reviewed those. There may be some names added to the agenda here later in the month.
That's good news. As of last week, was it no kids applied for a summer job here?
Correct.
Okay, how crazy is that, right? Nice. Approve authorizations who were proposal quotes for replacement of the capital equipment as listed in the attachment. Approve authorization to seek requests for proposals, RFP for facilities master planning and visioning services. Approve authorizations to seek requests for proposals for facilities energy investment for audit services. And facilities operations and planning committee meeting minutes of May 6, 2021 are attached. Our next facilities operations planning committee meeting will be June 10, 2021, 3:30 at the Idem Hall. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Transportation, Mr. Manes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Uh, for transportation, I have no report tonight. Um, and I'm going to move along to student activities and recreation. For the 25th minute, there will be one agenda item, and that will be to approve a five-year Excel Health Athletic Trainer Contract, and that is attached to the following agenda. And the next Student Activities and Recreation Committee meeting is to be determined. And that's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Manes. Community relations, Mrs. Surratt.
Thank you, Mr. McCallum. Uh, at our general meeting, we'll be asking for your approval and agreement between the Latrobe GLSD Partner Recreation, Unity Township, and Youngstown. Um, additionally, uh, attached to your agenda is the Latrobe GLSD Partner Recreation Commission, uh, meeting minutes from a meeting held on April 15. Um, approve the, I'm sorry, that can't be right. We're, we're throwing around this every month. From the meeting held April 15, approve the March 18 21 committee meeting minutes. So at the meeting on April 15, they approved the minutes from March 18, which is going to be your attachment. We're having a hard time figuring out a smooth way through quite that, it's one thing every month. Thank you. And then the next, uh, meeting of the Latrobe GLSD Partner Recreation Commission will be Thursday, May 20, at 4:30 at Latrobe Municipal Building, Ponce and Chambers.
Thank you, Ms. Surratt. What's more, intermediate unit, please, on, Mrs. Manes.
Thank you. The summary of the DUMY ID Board meeting minutes from the meeting held on April 7, 2021 are attached. The next DUMY ID community meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 25, 7:00 PM in the Federal Audience Center.
Thank you, Mrs. Manes. Word policy, the AID, please, on, Mrs. Surratt.
Thank you, Mr. McCallum. Also, the general meeting, we will be, uh, asking for your final adoption and approval for court policies listed below. Uh, policy 137.1 for the extracurricular participation by home education students. Policy 150, an updated version titled 1, Vulnerability of Services. Policy 335, also an updated version of the family and medical leave. Um, and there's attachments there for me to read over. And policy 810.3, um, an updated version of our policy for, um, school vehicle drivers. And our next board policy committee meeting is not yet scheduled, be determined. Thank you, Mr. McCallum, that's all we have.
Thank you, Mrs. Manes. EDA, the CTC Director Operating Committee, Mrs. Cozart.
Thank you, Mr. McCallum. The meeting minutes from our last meeting in April, on April 28 are an attachment in your agenda. And our next Director Operating Committee meeting will be Wednesday, May 21st at 7:00 PM at the WCPC. That's my short.
Can I ask a question, because, how do you, what was that kid, that kid that won from Latrobe, um, about $15,000 scholarship?
The car, yeah.
Yeah, what was that for?
Oh, it was, it was auto, auto repair.
And it was like some crazy, obscene, you know, scholarship.
He won, he won everything.
That you said.
It was in the paper.
Yeah, I saw it in the paper, I didn't see it on the website, though.
Oh, it's in the director's report, let me pull that up.
I think it was on our website.
Wasn't it the Georgia?
Hang on, Bill.
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
It's on the, uh, Student Online. Scholarship winner, automotive technology student, Landon Powell, it's very Latrobe Senior High School. Plays first in the Great Pitford Auto Vehicle Dealers Association Annual Scholarship Competition. This year, the competition was held virtually through a secure testing platform, and students had to complete a reverse knowledge assessment. Landon had the top score out of all contestants that participated from Western PACCTC. The GPA DA will be presenting Landon with a $10,000 scholarship that he can use towards post-secondary automotive education. The award ceremony is scheduled for May 7, so it'll happen at the Community College of Allegheny County, I believe. Landon also passed multiple ASB entry-level certifications among various other industry certifications during his time at the WCPC. Congratulations. Well, that's really amazing.
They did a good job on that.
Absolutely.
And that kind of scholarship is just incredible.
More excited to have our ninth grade, some of our ninth grade students.
Yeah, that was a big number next year.
That's great.
Really pleased about that.
And why do I have the director's report pulled up, just for your, all of your knowledge? Every year, they do a, um, a follow-up study of the class, the previous year's class. So they did a follow-up study for the class of 2020. Um, Ms. Newhouse did this, and this was a low year because of COVID. But their positive placement rate is 90%. 53% are employed, 33% are attending post-secondary education, and 4% are attending, entering the military. 90% is the lowest number they've had in probably 10 years? Something like that. It's usually 94, 95.
I was going to say, mid 90s.
Yeah, so this is just we affected COVID. And Mr. Wyler was very upset about it, and we looked at it and said, it's 90%. That's still really high. And it puts our, um, CTC higher than many others in the state, which is impressive as well. So they're doing a great job in that.
They do a outstanding job.
So thank you. Oh, sorry.
Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Um, nothing to refer to.
That's good to hear.
Thanks, I'm walking, don't let my lead.
Prevention's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. McCallum. On our May 25th meeting, I will asking, I will be asking the board to please, uh, approve the following resignations. Renee Diary was a full-time secretary at Bagley Elementary for retirement purposes. Nicole Jamison, part-time food service resignation. Michelle Stevenson, a full-time food service, uh, for retirement purposes. And Zach Hyde, who filled in for our golf junior varsity coach this past year. We will also ask the board, um, on the 25th to approve a professional personnel, professional personnel, a teacher certified in Spanish K-12 as well as special education pre-K to 12. We will also ask for approval of substitute teachers. Right now, we have one substitute, Ryan Colette, who's certified in health and physical education. And we will be making this retroactive to May 10th, um, when Ryan received his certification. We also have, are asking for the approval of support personnel appointments, classified appointments. Nicole Jamison as a classroom assistant, and making that retroactive to May 3rd. Gina Yvonne and Melissa Redinger, summer psychologist. Each year, we do hire a summer psychologist to assist in our people services office. Symphony Fowler is a new custodian. And we will have a recommendation for confidential secretary, which would be for Karen Townsend's retirement, and a full-time secretary, which would be for Renee Diary's retirement as well. We also have supplemental positions. And Lester Williams softball JV coach, retroactive from March 8. And Dana Machinsky, who has served as a volunteer, volunteer junior high softball coach, making that retroactive to April 23rd. We will ask, also ask for the approval of the employee benefit and pay plans that will come into effect July 1, 2021, that have been reviewed by Mr. Watson and are included in the budget. Other business, we have our Science National Arms Society scheduled for Thursday, May 20 at Broderick Park at 6 o'clock PM. We're getting ready for our prom day, Friday, May 21st. And that is also an act dating day for our teachers for professional development. Our Senior High School Boards Assembly, Thursday, May 27th, we will be holding that. And our seniors will be in the attendance for that. And that will also be, um, livestreamed at 8:30 AM for parents and family members as well as other students in our, um, school building to view. We will do the traditional Class of 2021 School Walk on Friday, May 28, where our seniors get to visit, or I should say, revisit their elementary school that they have, uh, attended, which is always a very exciting event. Last year, we were unable to do that for our seniors, obviously, because our schools were, um, not in session. Memorial Day, no school Monday, May 31st. And our back a lot of services, Wednesday, June 2nd, which will be in our high school at 4:00 and 7 o'clock. And graduation, June 3rd, with the rain date of June 4th at Memorial Stadium. Our last day of instruction and an early dismissal is Friday, June 4th. And as we already have stated, our next regular board meeting will be Tuesday, May 25th at 7:30 PM due to next week's election. And our June meetings, Tuesday, June 8th, and Tuesday, June 26th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Any other questions or maybe we'll have for the board? All meetings are to an end. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Stay safe.